Okay, good evening, everybody. And welcome to the August 15, 2023 Special Board of Education meeting for Arlington Heights School District 25. This meeting is for the superintendent search. I call the meeting to order for August 15, 2023. And Lana, would you please call the roll? Olanichak?
Here.
Nierman?
Here.
Scapalato?
Here.
Jogi?
Here.
Surnigaliya?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Fassal?
Here.
Thank you, Lana. And please stand if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now is the time for community input. If you wish to address any item on the agenda, please complete one of the forms provided on the table in the lobby and hand the card to Lana O'Brien, our recording secretary. Please note on your card if you wish to speak at the first community input opportunity or if you wish to speak at the second community input opportunity. And we have a script that I'll go through. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and to operate its meetings in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow these guidelines. One, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda. Secondly, identify yourself and be brief. You'll have three minutes. And third, please be respectful and courteous. And the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board, our staff, or our guests. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. So at this point, I will welcome Dr. Tim Schimpf and Dr. Bhavna Sharma Lewis. Thank you for being here. We're excited to be collaborating and launching our superintendent search even more in-depth today with you. And if you could walk us through the topics of discussion today.
Very good. Well, nice to see everybody. Exciting time. We had an opportunity beforehand to meet, to talk a little bit more about the communication efforts and what's going to happen, really, really fast here. Soon as we get through Labor Day, things are going to pick up at quite a pace. So what we want to do in our time together is go through our focus group and community forums scheduled with all of you so you're comfortable. And if there's any questions to address, we'll make sure we do that. We'd like to confirm some advertising decisions regarding the posting of the superintendent opening as we move forward, knowing that it's going to be September 1st, where we're going to make sure that goes live, at least on the school exec connect website, and working to make sure it's visible and links on your website also. Talk a little bit about the communication that's going to happen moving forward so that all the board members and community is aware of the transparency that this board has committed to doing. Get a little bit of an idea of comparison districts that you, as a board, would like us to look at from a compensation and financial package report that we're going to provide to you down the road. And if there's anything else related to the timeline to answer and field questions. So that's our goal. A lot to cover, but I think we'll be okay getting through that. What I would like to do is start with, I think all of you have been provided a copy of the, or it's coming around, I'm sorry. And thanks to Stacy and Lana for all your support as we came into this evening. So a schedule's coming around. Based upon the board's desires originally, really from the onset of when you interviewed us, you've been very vocal about the need to have your community voice reflected in this process and to be transparent with your community through the search. So what Bhavna and I, in collaboration with Madam President and your staff have done is put together what we believe is a very thorough opportunity to get stakeholder input regarding the strengths, opportunities, priorities, and attributes you're looking for in your next leader. So if you look on the front side of this, you'll see that we are looking to begin September 6th. And you'll see that the times for the staff are after-school from 3:45 to 4:30 at the elementary level. So Bhavna and I are going to be meeting with each of the staff members somewhere over the first, really, two weeks of September, after-school hours to be convenient. The staff that may not be able to make it at their own building will certainly be offered the opportunity to go to any of them. So making sure, you know, they have, there's really no reason if they want to give voice and want to participate, they will be able to do so. We are also looking at three community forums. You'll see the one is an open community forum. Tentatively, we're looking at an October 2nd date for that, but we have to just coordinate some schedules. That'll be for really anybody. So if they're not an elementary parent or a community member that are not a middle school parent or community member, they can go to that one as well. So if you'll see, we have the TBD, but then we also have one, or both of them, on the 13th of September that anyone is invited to, to go to. And then we'll have that third one TBD shortly, within the next day, solidified. And then you'll see when we get to, we're going to spend the 14th in your district for quite some time, meeting with PTA presidents, building and district admin, middle school students, which will be wonderful. So we'll provide them some lunch and spend some conversation at each of the middle schools, as well as then a select group of city officials, nonprofit leaders. And then we'll end the day speaking to the middle school staff. And then if you turn to the back page, another avenue to get your community involved, if they can't make it to the dates in person, we've been asked to conduct two virtual open forums at a later time. So one, or excuse me, one in the morning, but then one at a later time, 7 o'clock at night. So there'll be a Zoom that'll be working with your district to facilitate. So really, we believe a very thorough opportunity for your community to be involved and voice to be heard. As board members, after this evening, we will work with you individually to set up either virtual or in-person times. You know, those can happen really anytime after tonight. And Bhavna and I will reach out to you and make sure that we work around your schedules, weekends, evenings, to do that. So all of that leading up to creating a profile that we're going to present to you on October 10th. Any questions regarding the forums or the focus groups?
I just have a comment, Tim and Bhavna. Like, we're sitting in the, we're meeting through these. They already had a robust schedule of dates, and we threw more dates at them, and they were happily, you know, went along with that. So we added the virtual ones, so thank you so much. We added the open community forum. So if they couldn't make, if folks in the community couldn't do the elementary or middle school, we have this open forum. And the goal that Tim and Bhavna understand from all of us is that we're trying to make sure that our whole community knows that we're doing this search and is part of the process and has every opportunity to be at the table for this conversation. So thank you for being, like, pulling out your calendars and accommodating an even more robust process. So I appreciate it.
So right about the time these are occurring, if you look on your calendar, your lengthy calendar of the entire process, September 11th, we're going to open up the survey. So we will be working with Adam and your district to make sure that there's communication well in advance of that survey with, through various means and avenues that we've already discussed with Stacy and Adam. So that survey will also be going out simultaneously as these focus groups and open forums are happening. So again, more opportunities for feedback and voice. All of that leading up to the profile that we will be coming back to the board to present in public on October 10th. And those will be 10 or 12 items of the skills, attributes, and qualities that your community, your stakeholders have said we would like to see within our next leader. We'll see if we can get all 12 of them, but that's our goal. So we're excited about that. And then as I talked to the group, and Bhavna and I talked to the group earlier, things will, they'll be really fast for a while, and then after that 10th, things will quiet down. Your community might be asking, well, what's going on? All of you might be saying, well, where are we? But that's where we're screening applicants. Bhavna and I have scheduled October 28th and 29th, that weekend, to be doing in-person interviews all weekend for candidates. We have some other dates available in the evenings before and after that if candidates can't make those weekends. So we've covered our bases, so you know the timeframe. So we're ready to go with that. And then we're looking to come back to you as a reminder on November 14th. You have a board meeting that night to present a slate and closed session of five to seven candidates to all of you and to go through that process so then you can bring in the work of how you want to move forward and narrow that pool down, obviously, to your final three candidates and then ultimately to your final one as we get to the September 12th date. So that's, as far as stakeholder feedback in the process, we're right where we said we would be. We feel very comfortable about where we are, very excited about the focus groups and getting to speak to your community members. And I heard there's wonderful restaurants in Arlington Heights, so we're going to spend some time figuring out where those are. But we're going to spend a lot of time with your, with your community, which is what we're really excited about.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Just a quick question on the timeline. So when we're coming back for November 14th, is it your thought that we would be receiving materials to review ahead of that, like a week ahead? Or, you know, so when we walk in on the 14th, we'll be prepared to talk about those candidates?
Well, probably not. We'll probably walk in with the materials. We don't also want, if you get them three or four days ahead of time, it just leaves a lot of options and possibilities for discussion. Or as you see who these candidates are well in advance. So we like, because there's, a lot of times there's context to, that if you see a list of five to seven names that are coming with paperwork ahead of time, you know, the tendency would be, well, I'm going to Google this person, or I'm going to, maybe somebody knows them that I know. Or, again, not this board would do that, but I did, we don't want to put anyone in a position to do that. We'd like to have the discussion with you and talk about strengths and opportunities. And if there is things that we need to share about these candidates, that you have that before, you know, you make a judgment or as a collective board, again, you're coming to consensus as a board. So we want to make sure that all of you are hearing the same thing at the same time and being able to hear the questions each other have.
And if I could comment first of all, nice to see everybody in person. I know we've met virtually, but thank you again for the opportunity. But to your question, Greg, we're going to interview on the 28th and 29th, and that really is about two weeks between when we present to you on the 14th. So that's going to take us some time to do some reference checks, make sure that the candidates are interested, put together a slate of the five to seven top candidates that we feel are going to be the strongest and best fit for District 25. So it doesn't give us a lot of time, I guess, you know, to get everything ready. So, and we want to make sure we thoroughly vet them. I think that's our priority, too.
Yeah, I was going to say, because since we've been, I've been talking to Bhavna and Tim a lot, and Bhavna's been here virtually, but I think this is your first time in person to District 25, so welcome. And I also want to welcome our board attorney, Tony Louiezy. Thank you for being here. As the board continues to make sure that we're very, this search is one of the most important responsibilities at this point, we want to make sure that the board is following all search guidelines and procedures. And so, Tony, thanks for all your advice to make sure that this is a thorough process that we're following here as a board. Yes, Rich?
So maybe going off of what was just asked earlier, Greg asked. So then the initial slat that will be given to us on, on or about November 14th, the five to seven. So it's the assumption that we will then interview all of those, meaning we're not going to weedle those down to five or three or two, all whatever you present are the ones that we're going to do in the initial round.
It's ultimately the board's discretion. So we're going to present the five to seven to you, and you may tell us, we want these four, we don't want the other three because of this reasons or...
I guess then I'd open up here, because I'd rather know that ahead of time. Because if, if we're going to be weedling or whittling them down, if that's our choice, then absolutely, I want to know the candidates ahead of time. If the intent is that you'll bring us those five and you're introducing us and then we'll go through the interview, then I can understand not having of you. But if we're going to try to whittle something down, then I want to make sure I understand and read through the material rather than getting it presented at that meeting. So that's, if you're leading that to us, then I'm going to ask our board members here, which way are we going?
But as a board, too, you don't also have to make the decision that night. I guess it'd be...
Well, I think we have to, right? Because if we're going to, if we're getting a list of five, five to seven, and then we're supposed to start getting folks ready to have special board meetings and start getting people ready to interview, we need to know which ones we're going to be interviewing.
Ideally, yes.
Okay. So then either we are going to agree that whoever you present, whether it be five or seven or six, we're going to interview all of them, or if we're going to whittle them down, then I'd like to have that material ahead of time so I can make sure I'm thoroughly read through the material. I'm not going to have enough time in a meeting to read through a material and then make a judgment call on the spot. I think that's kind of...
I think that's a fair point. And if I can respond to that, you've hired us to do the screening, the interviewing, the reference checks. So we're going to bring you the top five or seven. Our goal is to bring seven. You have three days, you've outlined three days. So we would say, here are the seven candidates we think you should interview. These are our top recommendations. If you say yes, we agree. There might be something that stands out to somebody right on a cover page, you know the person, you've had experience with them, whatever that is. We don't expect you to whittle them down. If that's something you want to do, that's fine. But my recommendation would be not to.
Okay. So that's a question for the board here to say, what is our approach? Are we, if we're going to plan to whittle them down at that point, then material ahead of time. If it's to use you as a base of the recommendation and say, we'll keep, you know, if you bring us five, we'll go with five. If you bring us seven, we'll go with seven. If you bring us six, we'll go with four. Just want to better understand what's our process there.
Madam President?
Yes.
So...
Brian?
I guess my perspective would be the five or the seven between the 14th and the 27th. I'd have to agree, I wouldn't be looking to whittle down until an interview. So I don't, I don't see the need to determine whether or not our objective is to whittle them down. I think our objective is to interview all five or seven. So they're going to present them on the 14th. We've got the 27th through the 29th for the interviews of the same slate. That's when the whittling down begins. So I see what you're saying, but I don't, I don't, I don't think our intention would be to whittle down after that first presentation prior to interview.
And the only time typically a board has done that is if there's a backstory. If there's something that just, or they say, you know, that's a non-traditional candidate, we're not interested, even though we believe they could be successful in this role. We're bringing, as I told you in the beginning, we're bringing you people that we believe can be successful in this job, based upon the profile, based upon our experience, based upon the interviews that we've had with them. We're not going to bring you someone we don't think can do the job.
We, we have time set aside on that, on if you look, I don't know if it's in front of all board members, right? The, is this packet in, so is this outline in front of all of us?
The calendar is.
Yeah, the calendar. So it's...
Yeah, this is, but I don't know if that's...
Yeah, yeah, the calendar. So we have time inbuilt in this process to interview the candidates that you present to us, the five to seven candidates you present to us. Yeah.
It typically would be two on the 27th, two on the 28th, two or three on the 29th. You know, and if you need another day, if three's too many, we can, you know, you guys can pick a different day.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's all, yeah, it is all built in into the interview process that we have assigned days, and those dates are here, and those dates have been also emailed to each board member. So you've had those dates as well.
Ideally, it would be six, and then from the six, you go down to three, since you've already picked these days. I feel like it just fits in the process. But if there's somebody that really stands out, that's outstanding, and we can't make a decision between, you know, six or seven, we're going to tell you that. And if you say, okay, fine, we'll interview seven, we'll add a third person, and we'll add a different date, that's great. If you say, no, we really want to keep it to six, well, then that's when maybe the discussion will happen.
Okay, sounds good. Does that suffice, Rich?
Oh, it's perfect. Another question.
Yes.
So just looking at the December 12th, and just thinking from a process, again, I know it's a long way off, actually not too far, but really thinking, wouldn't that date really be January when we take the final action? Because, again, from our process, we need to look at a contract, have the discussion, and then at the next meeting, make the vote, which would be January at that point. Because I don't think we can look at the contract and make the vote at the same time. Because that, then that action hasn't been brought forward.
Do you want to respond to that first, Tim, as far as what's typically done in other districts? Because our goal was to take action by December so we can start the onboarding process.
And we may talk about it. I don't think we can take final action on it.
We've had, we've had similar districts with this timeframe and what, prior to even, once we start getting to end of November, early December, they've worked with, boards work with their legal counsel to start drafting up the things you want in the contract.
Yeah, the contract isn't the issue. It's that to bring forth an action, it has to be brought forth for discussion first, right? So the contract would have to have been brought forth in December and then brought forward for, in January. And again, if I'm wrong, then please, you know, tell me. I'm just thinking from a process standpoint, we could talk about it with our intent to finalize, and then January is the final vote.
But I guess...
And Tony, if you could weigh in, please?
Your legal counsel would be...
Yeah, well, the contract's pretty standard, so drafting that is going to be pretty easy. There's no, unless you have a board policy, and I'd have to look at it. I know with, like, your board policy committee, there is a first reading and a second reading. But there is no legal requirement that you can't discuss the contract that night, probably in closed session, and then act on it later that night. Now, the board could also decide that they're not ready. So that would be up to the board. It's not a legal issue, though. Yeah.
Then from an onboarding standpoint, Rich, you know, the goal being that we hire our superintendent, make, take an action in December so that the onboarding can begin. And it sounds like, you know, this is, the whole timeline has been built to make this happen, December.
Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Maybe a clarifying question, Rich. I'm wondering is, if Mr. Louiezy explained, you know, it's a standard contract, could we look at contract language ahead of time? But when it comes to the 12, we finalize the numbers, for instance. So if you're, you know, your interest was to look at it earlier, I'm just throwing that out there, could we discuss the language?
And you will also, for when we present the slate of candidates to you, you're also going to have all of their compensation package in their current role. So you'll have that well in advance so that as you start to narrow down your candidates, you'll know where they're coming in and out. You, as a board, then you, prior to this, you can have discussion at some point as far as what that's going to look like.
Good points, Rich. Gina?
Okay, couple questions, different topic now. As we look at all the connections, these don't interfere with anything going on in the schools. We vetted this out. Lana, can we vet this out to make sure that we don't have any conflicts with anything else going on in the school? And then the second question that I have as it relates to this is you have the elementary and the middle school forum occurring at the exact same time on the exact same day. And there may be people that have both an elementary and a middle school child and may have different voices that they'd like heard. I don't know if we want to conduct that in the same manner and still give the community the voice that we're hoping to get from them. Granted, they can probably go to an open forum. So again, we either have to communicate the story, and we have to communicate the story well to explain what the expectation is, or we really should separate these because I think we do have quite a few families that may have a different voice that they want to speak about as an elementary parent versus as a middle school parent and what they're looking for in the leadership. So I just want to call out some conflicts that I saw and then just make sure that we vetted this against school calendar, school activities, different things going on in the district so that we don't have last-minute conflicts.
Good points, Gina.
I was just going to add, so we just discussed that previously, Adam and I, and we will, before this is made public and before anything's sent out, we will make sure all of these spaces and locations are available for use.
And that there's no conflict. So a shout-out to Adam as well. You know, Stacy and Adam and Lana have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes for, on behalf of the board. And Adam has a lot of tasks to accomplish in a very short amount of time, so he's back there so we can wave at Adam for all the work he's going to be putting into this. But Gina, you bring up a really good point about, you know, so, Tim, could you, and Bhavna, could you respond to that? Like, what is the, or reiterate the goals for those open sessions? So if I was a parent that had a middle school child and an elementary child, and I felt like I needed to be in both spaces, but what are the goals for those forums?
The goal is, we're going to be asking some prompting questions related to the strengths of the district, opportunities, some of the priorities that the superintendent should focus on in their first year, as well as the skills, attributes, and qualities they're looking for in the next year. So certainly, some, some of that might come out from an elementary or middle school standpoint. But it's also going to be broad in scope related to, you know, what type of information we're trying to get. But I could see certain, some parents saying they like to see their, you know, the superintendent more visible in the elementary schools, for example, or more in the middle school, or they like to have experience at the, you know, the primary level to be, you know, to support the elementary school. So I could see some of our elementary parents saying that, or whatever those things are that they're looking for improvement in or, or to brag about from a lens of grade level spans.
Yeah.
But I, but I think they could also do that at a community forum, or they could do that at one of the virtual nights as well.
And if they can't attend either, there's an opportunity to do so in a survey. So if they want to attend one, but they want to share something that they thought of later related to a middle school or the elementary, or the opposite, the survey's open for three weeks.
Yeah. But I think Gina brings up a good point because we've tried really hard through this whole process, and you folks have been so gracious in adding dates that it could be like a parent would see this and be like, ah, you know, feeling like it's more customized. If, when you're going back to the drawing board looking at dates, if there's a possibility to change that, to have a different elementary and different middle school, let us know if that's a possibility.
Or just one, five, six, one...
Oh, got it.
Same location.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe you move the location, right?
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Sorry, thank you. Even if we picked hypothetically Olive and Thomas because they're right next door to each other, right, and just do one, and then a half hour later, the other, or Dryden and South aren't that far, which is what has been laid out already here, they're not that far apart where we could do one earlier and one a little bit later. At least it gives the option to the community.
Okay. Good feedback. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, I like that idea a lot, having the same day, different times. And say Thomas is at the north end of town, then maybe somewhere in the south end of town or something where you drive over, grab something at our restaurant, and then...
That's usually better.
Closer?
For sure.
Yeah. And then I'm thinking that, do southern parents say, I'm not going, but regardless, we can talk about that more. But I like the idea of different times, same day.
Maybe Stacy and Adam, you guys could talk about where you'd want those, and then we can, we'll just update the document.
I was going to say, you have our availability, which is basically this, right? So if you want to manipulate...
Where they happen doesn't matter to us.
Well, are you available on the 13th? If one session is five to six, and then the next one's 6:30 to 7:30? Okay. So we'll just put a location to it. Okay.
Okay, great. Great point. Anything else?
Madam President?
Yes, Kevin.
I have a question that this is, this could be for our guests and for my fellow board members. Looking at the timeline, between the final night of candidate interviews, first round interviews, which would be November 29th, and then the beginning of background checks on the final three candidates, which would be December 4th, is there a recommended or planned process for how we, as a board, will determine who those three final candidates will be and then share that information with you?
So you're saying between the first round of interviews and the second round of interviews?
Correct.
I think that's something that boards usually do on their own. You know, I bet you'll see kind of a natural top three come about, and then you'll say, you know, you'll have your discussions. We can provide you with maybe some talking points or ways to rate or scale them. And then we'd hear from Anisha if, you know, here are the top three that we've decided on. And then at that point, we've already done the background check. And then at that point, we've already done the background check, we can go even further if we know that these are going to be your three top ones that you're going to select to interview. That answer your question?
Yes. So, so I guess what we need to decide and discuss, not necessarily tonight, but in the near future as a Board, is what procedure we want to take to make that determination once we've gone through the first round of interviews.
And I'm also thinking about, like, I believe, Kevin, what you're saying, between that meeting and the December 4th meeting, there isn't an, like, do we discuss it in closed or open? And our attorney will tell us, so we want to be sure it's an open, following Open Meetings Act as well? So that's where my head is. So that's a good question.
It's going to be closed session, for sure, when we're talking about candidates. And most often, if your last interview's on November 29th, you'll probably talk about each one at the end of each meeting.
Okay.
But then on the 29th, you guys will all stay later, after the final interview, and say, okay, where are we at? And let's go around and whittle it down to three. And then you'd communicate it to the search firm, and they'd set up the next round with those individuals, and start the background checks. And then, just going back to your question, because I want to make sure I answered, we will have a session before an offer that is made, where you'll see a template contract. I'll have boxes like, I need to know salary range, I need to know sick leave, I need to know vacation, I need to know if there's 403 contribu... So we'll need to know all that, because Anisha will need that information, for us then to step away from that meeting and start negotiating with the final candidate.
Great questions. I would...
With or without the microphone? So if I could piggyback on that, Madam President? Just thinking out loud here, let's just say the number is six candidates. Maybe we target to do three interviews on the 27th, three interviews on the 28th. If there's a seventh, we do one on the 29th, but ideally, leave the 29th for our discussion time. And then we're not, right? So I don't know if we want to be interviewing, and then, oh, okay, now let's get our, you know? So that, that would be kind of how I think we should...
That's a great suggestion.
Some, yes, excellent suggestion. Because it's going to be, it could be a long night, if not.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Anisha, we can also have Dr. K. share with the Board at some point, kind of the process we go through when we interview for other administrators, and the process he uses at the end of interviews to get, gather all the input from staff, and narrow down the candidates to the top three, if that would be helpful to the Board.
Yeah, and I believe that, that would be helpful, and I, well, I want to hear from my colleagues as well. But we also are going to be trained on interviewing skills as well, right? That, that's happening on November 14th, the interviewing workshop, but that added piece would be great, too. So do we want to put, do we, Tony, can we plug that in? Is that okay for Dr. K. to kind of go over that process with us? Should we plug that into this calendar right now, or in another process? Is that closed, open?
When does he discuss some of you, the process for interviews?
Just how, like, matrix is and stuff we use at the end of interviews, plus minus, different philosophies.
You're just talking generally about the procedure. It's going to be an open session.
Yeah, I think he can just draft something to communicate it to the Board, and then the Board can kind of see different, there's only a handful of processes we've used, and then if any of those work...
That'd be helpful, Stacy. Thanks, Tim. Any other questions? You guys are really great in being seven pairs of eyes on this.
And the last thing we're going to cover, if there's no more question than that, is Bhavna wants to talk about just the advertisement, and make sure that the Board is very clear on the direction we're going with advertising for the position.
So in addition to the outside advertising that we're going to do, I know, meeting with Adam, he's going to do a very rich and robust job of getting the word out as soon as possible, I believe by the end of this week. Kind of putting together a QR code and mailing home a postcard, just, you know, raising awareness that there is a superintendent search due to retirement. So it's, you know, good reason, getting some good press out there, and that way, getting, then putting the schedule out. So in addition to what you're going to be doing internally on your website, and through social media avenues, as well as paper mail, is we will be advertising for free with the IASA, which is the Illinois School, Illinois Association of School Administrators, that's at no cost, the school exec website, which is our firms, at no cost, and then posting as well on your district website. That being said, there's other options that we can do for cost that we presented to you in our initial proposal. So with IASA, which is the National American Association of, American Association of School Administrators, that basic, you know, job flash for about four weeks is $409, and it reaches all the superintendents throughout the country. If you want to go eight weeks, it's $699. So four weeks or eight weeks, that's the difference in price. And then there's Education Week, which is a print issue, there isn't, which is two tu, two print ads for five periodicals is $1,079.50. And then the online cost of doing Ed Week is $495. My suggestion would probably be doing the online, if you're going to do that. But IASA probably covers a lot of that, you know, so the same people that get Ed Week are the same people that get IASA. So I don't know if you necessarily need to do the Ed Week piece, that I'm sharing it out with you. And then the other pieces that I would recommend, or the other associations I would recommend, is the National Alliance of Black School Educators, $250 for 30 days. And then the Association of Latin American Superintendents, it's about $150 for 30 days. So I think that those are very good. I think you're going to get a broad range of people with diverse backgrounds. It pushes your equity, or supports and strengthens your equity focus that you have in your strategic plan and your vision. And so I feel like, you know, and Adam's talked a lot about the social media pieces, so I feel like that'll get connected through your district as well. So my suggestion would be, and to be cost-effective and efficient, would be the IASA, Ed Week, if you want to, online, and then the National Association of Black Educators, and then the Association of Latin American Superintendents. So it would be 150, 250, and then 409 or $699. And then if you want to do Ed Week as an additional $500 online.
Thanks, Bhavna, for outlining that. Any thoughts on those? Do you need direction from us today, as far as which way to go?
It would be nice so we can get, you know, because Adam's going to share things out at the end of the week. It'd be nice if we did it simultaneously.
Yeah.
Couple of clarifying questions. So IASA's free?
Yes.
District is our own. IASA's 500, if I heard right?
409 for four weeks, 699 for eight weeks. And I would recommend...
Ed Week would have overlap, right?
Pardon me?
You said Ed Week would potentially overlap with IASA?
Yeah.
And that's print?
Print or online. But that's what I'm saying, like...
And IASA is online?
IASA would be online.
And what, what's the overlap in IASA along with these other smaller organizations?
I would probably say, I don't have exact numbers, but most superintendents, and I'm thinking the high 90 percentiles, are members of IASA as well as IASA. That covers the majority of your group.
So that's what my gut is telling me. Consistency, stay national. I mean, if we really searched, we could probably find six or eight more of a certain demographic, or a certain this, or a certain that. So that's my own opinion. I think IASA, District, and IASA, I would think cover it. There's overlap in every other one, in my opinion. Madam President?
Yes, Greg.
Yeah, I, I hear where Brian's coming from, but I think, you know, at the, the cost for those, the National Association of Black Educators, and the other National Association of, and help me with the rest of the title, sorry.
Oh, Latin American Superintendents.
Thank you. The proportional cost for the, the additional reach in areas that just may not, we just don't know, right? Like, there, it's, it's our one opportunity to extend that reach and, and find those excellent candidates. So, but I, I think the, the overlap between IASA and, and Ed Week, I would agree with Brian, that probably IASA would be my suggestion, but open to, open to the thoughts here. If, if there's benefit, you know, we get, we get one shot every, every so often on this. So this, I don't think this is where to nitpick it.
So I think what I'm hearing, oh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to second what Greg said. I, I think that casting as wide a net as possible, and really, like, you, you mentioned yesterday as we launched, you know, we, walk the talk, I think, is the phrase that you use. And I think if we're, if we're really promoting, you know, being a, you know, district that embraces diversity, then we need to make sure that we cast as wide a net as possible in our search. So I would agree that we should include those organizations.
Okay. And thank you to all three of you. So what I'm hearing is IASA, District, which is, you know, we have, a lot of folks follow, Adam has already established such a strong presence. IASA, would, I would say the 409 versus the, because they have the same audience, no Ed Week, is that what I'm hearing? Because it's the same. And then the two more diverse outreach efforts as well.
That's very clear.
Sound good? Thank you. Okay. I want to say, one thing before I forget, is that when Bhavna speaks to us all, one-on-one individually, you'll see that they are going, you know, when we're casting this outreach, letting everybody know we're doing this, getting feedback from everybody, we're going to be inviting PTA presidents, building admin, of course, district admin. We'll also be inviting union leadership, city of, there'll be a focus group for city officials, as you can see, non-for-profit leaders and so forth. So when you speak, one of the questions you could ask, remind Board members, is say, hey, are there non-for-profit leaders that you would suggest? So they'd be able to help build that list out for, for you two, and for us, as, as we invite different folks from the community. So Board members, if you can think about, you know, non-for-profit leaders, and city officials and so forth. City official we got, but non, there may be non-for-profits that some of us know of, some of us don't know of.
Anisha, can I just ask that, if any Board members have individuals that they want to make sure are included in any of these groups, you can email Lana and I?
Yeah.
So we can make sure that those individuals are specifically invited to the forum?
Perfect. So, and sooner rather than later, right? Because we don't know when that's happening. So just remind us that we need to have sent those names over to Stacy, and let's really get everybody we can think of at, you know, to this, to these tables. I, also, I want to reiterate what Bhavna said. Adam had the great idea, we're going to, we're going to have 20,000 mailers going into, 20,000 homes in Arlington Heights, reaching pretty much our whole community, and that